All right, can you see me?
Yes, sir, you're good to go.
One, all right. All right, we can go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back for our second Town Hall on our racial equity audit of our comprehensive housing policy. Last night, we had a very engaging conversation, and we expect the same thing tonight. So let me kind of set the tone like we did last night. We will be having these meetings for the next couple of days, Wednesday and Thursday. This is to allow you to have an opportunity to give us input on your thoughts around the racial equity audit, and we're honored to have our consultants who are in person tonight. So at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Chair Janie Schultz, who chairs our Workforce Education Equity Committee, for a few remarks.
Thank you, Chair Thomas. I just wanted to say what a privilege it is to be able to work on this project. We're at the larger picture of this, we're going to be, we have identified the equity indicators, and we're using this model of the of the Housing Department and the Comprehensive Housing Plan Audit as something that we could look throughout city departments. And we're also going to be rolling out the overall equity indicators plan, the equity plan for the city. And what I really want to say is that I don't know that our community really understands or appreciates what a sea change this is in in attitude and in approach. It's a way that's going to build a strong future for our children, for the city, the folks who work here at the city, and for everyone who's involved in the work that we're trying to do. And I just want to thank Chair Thomas, you have driven this, and you have led this, and I want to thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing what everyone has to say about it. So thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to the team now. Thank you all.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. My name is David Noguera, and I serve as the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization here with the City of Dallas. I'm going to introduce our consultants, who will be leading us through this discussion. First, we have John Gilvar, if you could introduce yourself.
Great. Thank you. It's very nice to be here with John Gilvar. Really looking forward to hearing more input. I had great input last night, and looking looking forward to getting more input into our recommendations and how they might be improved. Thank you.
Great. Next, we have Christine Campbell.
Good evening. We're excited to be here again with you this evening. We're excited about this project and are looking forward to hearing your thoughts, your inputs and suggestions.
And finally, we have Michelle Williams.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Great. So, John, I'll turn it over to you to walk us through the presentation.
Great, thank you. We're here to talk about the comprehensive housing policy equity assessment and recommendations that we made. And we're going to go through these background slides quickly because we really want to save the vast majority of the meeting for your thoughts and maybe even some interesting discussion. But I but I do think we felt like it was important to just provide you with a little bit of an overview of the purpose and the background, and we're also going to walk through our recommendations. Christine, we'll do that in a few minutes and talk about the next steps. So the comprehensive housing policy, as people likely know, is the primary tool for the City of Dallas in addressing the local affordable housing crisis. And last year, TDA, which we represent, was asked to analyze the ways that the comprehensive housing policy helps or hinders the city in achieving its racial equity goals in alignment, as the council members are saying, in alignment with the overall racial equity push that the city has made. And then, so we worked on that through the summer. We were here in August. We had many, many community meetings, met with council members and lots of stakeholders, and then created a report, which we submitted to the Housing Committee. We made a short presentation with our recommendations to the Housing Committee, and now we're doing these Town Hall meetings to obtain community feedback on our draft recommendations. So the background and history, we started with looking at how the historical context of inequity, which is common in many, many cities in our country, applies to Dallas's history. And we used that as a jumping off point. We did we did some research on that. We read a lot of local local reports about that. There's many, many researchers and lots of reports that talk to that. But we really wanted to hear from people with lived experience, people that people whose personal experiences impacted by that history. And so we did listening sessions and interviews. We did tours. We reviewed data, additional data that the city supplied. But we really, we really wanted to focus on, and we listened to a real array of stakeholders, so people from different neighborhoods, neighborhood advocates, developers, contractors, nonprofits, all kinds of folks, local historians, et cetera. And we use that historical lens to look at the strengths and gaps that the community feels are in the current housing policy and the kind of approach to affordable housing and how it does or does not enhance the city's ability to advance equity and especially racial equity. We presented the report and the recommendations, as I said, and you can see the bolded bullet here is we're obtaining additional community input. And then, once we have that, we will continue to work with the city staff and the council for to help craft a way forward. So our starting point again is learning about barriers to safe, quality, affordable housing and homeownership for African-American and Latinx residents. And as I said, when we were looking at affordable housing in general and the affordable housing crisis that has impacted Dallas and many other cities where there's a hot economy, hot real estate market, lots of new people moving to the community, we learn that those barriers are much higher for Black and Brown residents than they are for white residents. So here's just a couple of examples. I'm going to tick through these very quickly because, again, we want to save time for your input. But just if you look at this one, the percent of Dallas households with housing problems and the way that housing problems are defined is when people have to pay more than 30% of their income toward housing, or they live in substandard housing. And when we look at this, we see that Latinx residents are almost twice as likely as white residents to be affected by those problems, and Black residents are also much more likely to have those issues. Same kind of scenario with homeownership rates. You can see that white households are almost twice as likely as Blacks to own their own homes, and Latinx households are also lagging significantly behind their white counterparts. And then, if you look at the the next one is the median home values. You can see that the median home value for white households that own their own homes is about three times the value for African-American and Latinx households. So the next one. And then, we also looked at what many, many folks in Dallas over the years have termed the North-South Divide. And we looked at local reports about that and research. This map actually shows the where it's labeled Southern Dallas. It's that represents the nine city council districts that cover the southern part of the city. And what we learned is that over 800,000 African-American and Latinx residents live in those nine council districts that where it's labeled Southern Dallas, which is actually more than the entire population of Seattle or Washington DC or Boston, that 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 the entire population of the area labeled Southern Dallas is about 65, 64, 65% of the city's entire population. And yet, only 10% of the property assessed for property taxes in the entire city is contained within that Southern Dallas area. So that's just another example of the sort of over the context that that your affordable housing policy is trying to grapple with in terms of in terms of disparities and inequities. And again, very common in many, many cities, you know, Dallas is not alone in that. But we wanted to hear local voices and read read local voices on what are the root causes of that kind of North-South divide in terms of inequities. And here's just a couple of things that we that we saw. The first one says, "Decades of disinvestment in Black and Hispanic neighborhoods have culminated in substantial differences in basic housing conditions, neighborhood quality, and access to amenities." The indicators in this theme, which is the theme is part of the equity, the equity tracking that the city does, demonstrate deep disparities along racial, ethnic lines, particularly in access to housing and housing affordability and services, disparities that have worsened since the baseline year, so worsened even since the city started to track its racial equity scores. Then the next one talks about decades of redlining policies to promote northward development, urban renewal initiatives, and construction of highways and infrastructure through the middle of historically Black and Hispanic neighborhoods. And then the last one is a quote from someone who talks about sort of a peanut butter strategy over the years of, "Take a pot of economic development money and spread it evenly across the city to all 14 districts, from the have-nots to the have-a-lots." Okay. So the what we are seeking to do with our recommendations, which Christine will start just walking through with you in a moment here, is the critical choice, look at the critical choices that the leaders must, the leaders of the city must make to authentically commit to tackling housing disparities like the ones I just went through. And these the these statements from our report sort of summarize the choices that need to be made. City leaders will create, or not, a strategic roadmap that sets a course toward redressing racial divides. City leaders will address the deficit and basic infrastructure upon which the development of mixed-income neighborhoods depends. City leaders will actively work to level the playing field that has been tilted in favor of predominantly white areas by making significant investments throughout Dallas. And city leaders will actively seek input from the community to develop a mission, vision, and goals to achieve affordable housings, an affordable housing system that is equitable. And that's really what we're embarking on this evening. And I'm going to turn it over now to Christine.
So based on a lot of the information, we worked together with the city staff to draft some recommendations on a way forward for Dallas. So what I'm going to do tonight is first, I'm going to read through the recommendations, and then we're going to stop, and we're going to get input about what people think about each of these recommendations. So the first recommendation that we developed, that we drafted, was that we would create a policy vision statement that articulates how affordable housing playing field will be leveled for all racial groups across the North-South Divide. As the previous, one of the previous slides showed, you could see how much of the population is in the South where much of the resources are in the North. The second recommendation is that upon achieving, creating that vision, that we'll create a comprehensive citywide strategic roadmap for coordinating the policy's array of tools while also leveraging community partnerships to address the very different needs for change from one area of the city to the to another. So we acknowledge that the city is not monolithic, that that each community has its own culture, its definition, its its own special way of being, and we want to respect that, highlight that, enhance that throughout all of Dallas. But we also know that if without a roadmap, we don't know, we won't know where we're going. The third recommendation is that after that roadmap is developed, that we establish smart goals for the policy that point to the desired state, so that gives us a way to be accountable and measure our success and our progress along the way. The fourth recommendation is to strengthen linkages between the policy and neighborhood revitalization strategies that leverage infrastructure improvements, economic revitalization, and mixed-use master planning to build a foundation for increasing generational wealth in historically Black and Brown communities. We know that when we create pathways to generational wealth, we lift up those parts of the community. And that's what we're wanting wanting to be able to do, is to lift up those parts of the community that have historically been left behind. We want to add a goal around remedying the enormous infrastructure deficit that has persisted in Southern Dallas for generations. We cannot develop without water, electricity, plumbing, high-speed internet. So all of those things need to be included as part of the foundation of the work that we're doing. We're recommending that we use an all-14 district model to combat NIMBYism across all areas of Dallas. So in any strategy that we develop, we look at raising up all 14 districts, and when we move forward, we do so knowing that we not only have the plan, but we have the resources to be able to do that. Our seventh recommendation is to create a dedicated revenue stream that is scaled to the magnitude of Dallas's affordable housing shortage. A plan without the resources is just a wish. And what we want to do is make a plan, so we need to make sure that the resources are attached so that we can we can move forward. We want to expand and refine the current, the existing programs to create a comprehensive, integrated strategy for preventing displacement during neighborhood revitalization. Too many communities have moved forward with, across the country, have moved forward with developments to in to raise up parts of their community, and then looked back to see that all of the Black and Brown people have left the left the area. They've moved out because they can no longer afford to live in their communities that they've loved and treasured for so long. So we want to, from the very beginning, address the the potential and prevent displacement as part of the foundation of this plan. Our next recommendation is to use the policy to provide an avenue, a way to educate all city staff, policymakers, and public on what racial equity means, and in the context of affordable housing and community development. Many times when we look at equity, we it does not feel fair, because when we're addressing equity, we're providing opportunities for all people to thrive in their communities in the way that they thrive. So what one part of the community needs may be very different than what another part of the community needs. The other thing is that we want to be able to address the historic policies that have kept part of our community down, which means that we not only have to eliminate those policies, we also have to write policies that will lift that part of the community up. So those that part of the community that's already been lifted up may not see any policy that directly addresses that, but we will be addressing those policies that allow for Black and Brown people to be lifted up throughout our community. Our 10th recommendation is to strategize, strategically use low-income housing tax credits financing in both high-opportunity areas with low-poverty rates and distressed areas with higher rates. The LIHTC is a strategy that we want to be able to use in a way that's going to be part of a larger comprehensive blueprint, a roadmap that that can be used strategically. We don't, we believe that there is still a use for these projects to be able to do to achieve our goals. It's how we use them that's going to be extremely important. And that the policy should help dispel any myths about affordable housing that fuel NIMBYism. So there is, there are some real myths that building affordable housing in our communities brings down our property values. One thing that we want to point out is that affordable housing spans so much, that spans a lot of what some of us might call workforce development. It allows for our teachers, our firefighters, our first responders to be able to live in our communities. So when we think about affordable housing, one, we have to look at the broader definition. The other thing we have to understand, too, is that everywhere that this has been done, there is data to support that property values have actually gone up. So how do we dispel this myth that if we build these projects in my community, my property values are going to go down, when all of the data shows that this is something different, that the opposite occurs? So we want to make sure that that's highlighted. So these are the 11 recommendations that we have made. They are draft recommendations, and right now, what we want to do is hear from you. So the first question I want to pose is going back to our first recommendation, which is creating a vision for Dallas. And I want to ask, what do you see as key elements of that vision? Are there people? So so that is not a rhetorical question, and we are looking for people to provide. Those in the room, if you want to come to the mic here and share with us, that's great. If you are online, please indicate some way to our to us, and we will open your mic.
Is there anyone here that would like to come down and comment? Just listening? Well, now is the time, actually, for your response. We want to hear what your thoughts are on these recommendations and see if there's any that we're missing, any ideas that you have, and what's your experience in housing. If you don't mind, we'd love to hear from you. And as you're coming down, we'd love to hear your name, and if you're willing to share your name and and where you live, that would be very helpful as well, but it's optional.
My name's Daryl Baker. I live in Council District 3, Councilon Thomas's District. I represent a group called Fair Share for All Dallas. On recommendation number eight, what is problematic there is that is what gets left out. In talking to neighbors and talking to members of our group, especially our working group, yes, gentrification is an issue that removes people from neighborhoods, but also disinvestment and extreme poverty are as important. That's the flip side of that coin. When there's no reason to live in that neighborhood anymore, when Big Mama dies intestate without a will, and heirs can't really agree, and so the property gets abandoned, and one abandoned house in a case like this leads to others, and pretty soon, it's you hit that tipping point where it doesn't make sense to invest in an area that's been complete or largely abandoned. So that's the part that got left out that didn't get addressed. The other thing is that in your LIHTC program, we've been using low-income funding to build what we misnamed as affordable housing, as workforce housing, and that that has to stop. Your point is extremely well taken, that the real funding has to follow the programs. So this begs the other question, too, about is there really an affordable housing crisis in Dallas? I would submit, based on what our research has shown, that the region has an affordable housing crisis, absolutely. But when you have Dallas and Fort Worth as the only builders of any type of housing that's affordable or that poor people can use the ratio of 30% to live in, and the rest of the region has done nothing to move the needle, even in its aggregate, that's problematic. And Dallas cannot and must not assume this burden by itself. So these are aspects that have to be addressed, and as we, well, as I mentioned from our group last night, until we do a needs inventory that shows, as you will point out, by council district, how many affordable units are there, how many affordable units are needed. And this is, there's been a lot of resistance from northern districts to even have that conversation, and until unless and until that conversation is had, we can't responsibly move forward with something where we end up being the easy target. We build it south because there's land available and because it's easy. And one of our asks is that some of the projects that have recently been approved, both by the Housing Finance Corporation and the City Council, truly did not qualify because they were 100% low-income, regardless of what the City Council called it at that time. And those decisions, those actions need to be rescinded. It sounds like a really hard, tough thing, but it's a hard, tough thing, living in a district where we've got 18 LIHTC projects already, with assaults of more to come. And but for people who are way smarter than me, way more informed than I am, better spoken than me, who show up with real numbers, with statistics, and with facts, and say, "This makes no sense to do this," we would be probably the open door, the open valve of LIHTC for the region. So for the moment, that's at bay, but that's not a good way to run a city. It's not a good way to address an issue that's this big. And because we also have the regional housing, affordable housing plan that you all quoted from in the study, but I think it would be good to ask the other cities, what are you doing? What are you planning to do? And at least get them on record and say, "We're not going to do anything." Well, at least we know. And that's that's not okay, but at least we know what we have to do as far as that's concerned. So thank you for your time and your courtesy, and...
Thank you. Do we have someone on the line who would like to share their thoughts?
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to recognize Ms. Marva Snead at this moment.
Okay. Hello, my name is... Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. I said, I'm sorry. Yes, my question is, you know, what is the main reason that African-Americans and Latinas cannot purchase a home? And all these changes you guys are talking about, how soon is that going to happen? Are people going to be looking in 2020 that they're going to be able to purchase homes in the southern sector?
Thank you for the for the question. When you talk about why we don't have more African-Americans and Latinos purchasing homes in the southern sector, it really comes down to the issue of supply and demand. Frankly, we are not building enough housing in the southern sector. As an earlier map showed, the southern sector represents roughly 240 square miles, and it has large acres of developable land that we have have not begun to to develop. You will see the the average single-family home in the city of Dallas sells for about $340,000. And that cost is not what we would define as affordable. So when more affordable housing starts popping up, either in Dallas or in neighboring cities, you see it, it's selling right away because of the pent-up demand. So getting to your point about when we will see it, it will take time, but part of the exercise that we're going through today is to figure out what the strategy, what the approach is that we're going to use to get there. How will we direct our resources? How will we direct our political support? What will that ask be so that we can ultimately produce the the homes, the units that are being demanded across the city?
Can I just add? This is John Gilvar. So one of the, I appreciate, David, your... So one of the, I appreciate David, your addressing sort of the specifics around southern Dallas. From a national point of view, one of the reasons that you see a much lower homeownership rate for African-American and Latinx households is that the disposable wealth, what people think about as generational wealth that gets passed from one generation to the next, the home equity that could get passed from one generation to the next, which could help the next generation afford a down payment, et cetera, is a tiny fraction for the, when you compare that wealth, family wealth of white families to black and brown families. You know, I was just looking on my computer to see if I could get an exact number, but it's something about like a tenth of the wealth. So, you know, think about, you know, how people actually get into the homeownership market when they're working people who, you know, maybe they're teachers or policemen or, you know, other first responders people talked about last night. Without some kind of wealth, it's very difficult to get started as a homeowner.
Thank you. And also, I'd like to add is that in our country, there have been laws on the books that have prevented black and brown people from owning property very recently, within a generation. So when you think about my mom, my grandmom wasn't allowed to own property, that's how recent this is, that that makes it challenging for there to be a multi-generational passing on if you weren't allowed to own in the first place. So those are some of the structural systemic changes that need to be addressed and made up for in any policy moving forward that acknowledges that a person like me, a black woman, does not have three generations before me who gained wealth and passed on a house or a piece of property that I could actually start building on or I could start actually living on. Or that the piece of land that I may have, I come from a family where the indentured servant owner actually gave a piece of land to my great-grandfather, but it was the size of a postage stamp. There was no land attached to it, it was a building. So even what was passed on to us was not a substantial piece that was allowed to be developed. So when we look at the systemic systems that need to be changed, those are some of the things that Dallas is looking at, is how do we address this in a policy that acknowledges that history and actually does something to give a leg up to that part of our population that has for so long been held down?
Before we move on, I just want to, there's a question in the Q and A that I just wanted to respond to. Someone had asked, where can they find the report and the data? So if you go to DallasHousingPolicy.com, so that's Dallas all strung together, DallasHousingPolicy.com, you can find the report and the data that we showed on the slides is right there in the report.
Let me try again. There we go. And let me add also, in terms of data points, I think that it's also worth it to really take a look at the Dallas Equity Indicators, as WeAreOne.org. Take a look at that website, because those are some of the indicators that we're going to be using to look at the broader systemic issues, as you mentioned, right? So, and it's that old phrase, how do you, you know, eat an elephant one bite at a time? And so what we have to do is take each one of those indicators and see what we can do to begin to move those needles.
Do we have another question from online?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Ken Smith.
Hello, thank you for the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I think the recommendations are really all good. The devil is in the detail, as always. I think all of you know that the city has developed multiple plans in multiple departmental arenas for multiple years. The problem with the plans are not the plans, it's the implementation of the plan. And the issues become, who is the driver of the plan after the city council makeup continues to change every two years? So if we put together fantastic recommendations, who is going to implement it in year two, three, four, five through 10? That's the strategy that is missing. Once we change leadership and we shift our council, we have different directions and different goals and objectives, but who drives it all the way through the touchdown and the uprights? That's the issue. The other issue is trust. We, as a person who deals with the city of Dallas in many arenas, it is so frustrating because the departments do not plan together or implement together. Therefore, we have all of this silent thinking, which continues to be the rule of the day. I ride my bicycle through South Dallas Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning, and I see on ground level many, many houses being built. Very few we care, but many being built. But we look at the environment in which the houses exist. They're often in depressed areas, next-door dilapidated housing, next-door code which is not providing the proper vigilance, poor lighting, crime and other things. Our philosophy in, when it comes to actually what we do is to build a house, count the tax revenue we anticipate receiving, and we add that. And so success is the amount of taxes that we are now going to collect. Success is revitalizing a community by looking at its crime, its beautiful future, its streets, its roads, its lighting, all of the above at the same time. But we face that over and over and over again, and we don't know why we have that situation. I could go on, but I'm going to stop right here. We need to build trust, because in many ways, it is the seat departments that violate city policies as much as anybody else. I could give you examples, I won't do that tonight, but until we can all have the same vision and have the same vision, and a vision is a picture of a dire future state, we have to have the same vision and a driver to get us to the touchdown, to the field goal. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for both your questions and your comment, because I think you're right on to something, because they have to do with the sustainability of this whole concept. We can open our minds, we can talk about things all day long, and until we actually bake them into our worldview and into the systems in which we work, the change is not sustainable. So let me start off with the political piece of it. When I had the honor of being appointed by the mayor to chair the Workforce Education and Equity Committee, the very first thing that happened was Councilmember Chair Thomas sat me down, and he explained to me why this matters and why it's so important, and why he puts so much of his own social capital behind making this happen and just his relentless pursuit of equity. And so he helped teach me, and then I will be able to bring that in through my own lens and my own experience. And then I will hopefully be able to, as long as I'm in this position, I will then carry that on out of respect for him, but also because he taught me why it matters. And it's all about, you know, we only love what we understand, and I'm beginning to understand. I come from a place of privilege, I accept that, and I have to learn how to work together and really see the perspective of people who are coming from a different place. And we need both voices to make that happen. And I plan on carrying that banner alongside him and then after, because his term is nearly over, unfortunately. Regarding the environmental piece of it, in the sense of the whole picture, I think you've hit on something that I do want to, I want to agree with you completely and make sure that as we develop this plan, that we don't approve Lytec cases or any zoning cases in isolation any longer. The city is about to undertake a gigantic planning process called Forward Dallas, but I think it would be a very interesting discussion to have regarding zoning cases, regarding Lytec approvals, regarding any kind of special activity that the council needs to take, that we find a way to put it into perspective with the area in which it's going. And whether we set out a certain number of feet or miles or what are the consideration pieces, I would love to see our experts, both in planning and y'all who are here at the table, our consultants who are here from TDA, be able to help us figure out how we can put that into our systems and help the policymakers who may not be urban planners, who may not have driven out to the area where that particular project is going to take place, understand what do we need to be looking at so that it isn't done in isolation. I think you're absolutely right, and I'm so appreciative of your point. Thank you. And if any of our consultants, I mean, you all have vast experience, if you want to jump in there.
I was just going to say, I think that one of the things that we've really realized is that Lytec is just one of the tools in the toolbox. There are many different ways of looking at development. And I also think that we need to really separate out affordable housing from low-income housing. They are not interchangeable. And so when we're thinking about development and community revitalization, we're thinking about the whole spectrum of incomes, from low income to high income. When I was driving through the Freeman towns, I am a, right now, today, I was born poor, but right now, I'm kind of like an upper-middle-class black. I, as a relatively young, well, middle-aged, I would have loved to live in one of those Freeman towns because of the history of it, but it would need to have a grocery store, it would need to have the amenities that I would want to live there, and someone of my income bracket living in that part of the community would actually bring some taxes and resources to that community. But right now, the way they stand without infrastructure, they're not attractive for someone like me to move into. So we need to make sure that when we're thinking about development, we're thinking about the whole spectrum of development, and that affordable and low-income is just a piece of the larger look at the community. So when we're thinking about a blueprint, when we're thinking about a roadmap, we're thinking about community identity. We're thinking about what are we trying to build throughout that community using the affordable housing funds, using the affordable housing programs, using low-income housing programs in partnership with the larger community to build what eventually it is that they're trying to build. So I think, I want to again stress that any use of these programs needs to be strategic and in the realm of the larger vision for each part of your community.
If I could just add to that, this kind of goes back to what Mr. Baker was saying about our displacement recommendation. When Mr. Baker was right, and I think that Mr. Smith touched on this to a certain extent as well, that when there are a lot of vacant lots and a lot of poverty and a lot of, you know, code violations and all kinds of indicators of distress, market distress in an area, it does lead to people not coming to that area, and it leads to people leaving that area. I know we talked to Mr. Smith about this when we were here in August, people migrating out of the area. On the other hand, once, a lot of our recommendations have to do with the city investing in infrastructure that will bring some of those amenities that Christine is talking about, bring the grocery stores, bring employers, bring retail. Some of the, you have some great examples in southern Dallas, actually, of mixed-use developments that have been very successful. When that happens, though, what can also happen, very quickly, kind of a tidal wave of gentrification, where you see very quickly people with means, many people who are white moving into an area, and then there's a big squeeze on those people who have lived there for a long time. And so this, all of this is sort of a very dynamic situation that has to be managed carefully. And it goes to, I think, what the council member was talking about, about sustainability, because in what Mr. Smith was talking about, about this isn't a one- or two-year plan, because these dynamics will take years to play out. But once that gentrification really starts to gin up, then you really will see people get squeezed quickly on their property taxes and on rents, and if the city doesn't get ahead of that and be really proactive with some investment, and this is what many, many other cities are finding, that it actually takes an investment of significant funding to prevent displacement. So you need both. You need the investment of funds into infrastructure, and you need to be proactively looking out for people just having to move further and further from where the employers are, further and further, including outside of the city of Dallas, into areas where, you know, really, they're a long way from where their families and for generations have lived. So there's a real sort of sadness and injustice to that as well. Thanks.
Could I say, I'd like to ask a question also of the panel, as you're developing the plan. To your point, will you be including suggestions and ideas of how to preserve, you know, those homes? You know, I have a friend who lives in an area that's threatened right now, I hate that word, gentrification, so I'm not going to use it, but, you know, their home is threatened for exactly that reason, is property values go up. And yet, I'm telling my friend, whatever you do, don't sell, don't sell. And so will this policy include ideas for tax abatements or preservation or things that enable people to stay in their homes, not just in the situations where an area is increasing in value, but also for seniors who want to try to stay in their homes and all the other issues?
That's foundational in the recommendations, is looking at how people who want to stay in those communities can stay in their communities, and looking at the array of strategies like the ones you mentioned that can be implemented in Dallas to allow for people who want to stay to be able to stay. We've been looking at, you know, I fell in love with some of those houses that were built back in the late 1800s, early 1900s, absolutely gorgeous, that need some real investment, more than a $10,000 investment, to rehab those properties and add in the real infrastructure, to be able to keep that front frame and then be able to build the backs, you know, of those homes such that people would be able to thrive and live and be excited about their community, I think would be absolutely phenomenal. So foundational to being able to prevent displacement is implementing proactive strategies that allow for that to happen, people who want to stay to be able to stay. Is it going to be easy? No. I mean, is it a simple answer? I am a firm believer, if it was simple, it would have been done already, you know? So I think that it's going to take some dialogue, some research, some strategy, some cost-benefit analysis on how do we make this work so that those folks that want to stay there can stay there and thrive in their own communities.
And I would just add to that, that you have some allies in other cities in Texas. So a lot is happening in Houston, for example, around prevention of displacement, and Austin and other cities where, really, in some ways, they're expanding on programs that you already have to help people with repairs, to offer, you know, low-interest loans or forgivable loans on repairs, also with abatement of taxes for seniors and so forth, or freezing of taxes. A lot of it's complicated by state law, obviously, but a lot of things that Dallas is doing, some of these other communities around the state are saying, well, what we need to do is bring those to scale. And that's what we mentioned in our report, is they need to be adequately funded so that they don't run out of money, you know, midway through the third month, people can apply, right? can apply, right? That kind of thing.
Are there additional comments on the phone, on the?
Yes, we have, Mr. Ken.
Thank you. This is Ken Smith, Revitalize South Dallas again. One of the specific things that I would like to see is discussion about setting the tax rate. We can talk all day long about affordable housing, but when a house goes from $40,000 to $105,000 in one year, 169% increase, we have basically thrown out anything remotely related to policy. And I'm talking about a real situation. So the tax rate was reduced by about 12 cents or something, something very, very minor, but the appropriation of the valuation of the properties went up exponentially. Therefore, everyone is seeing doubling and sometimes tripling of their property taxes in low-income neighborhoods. And therefore, the displacement is not happening through eminent domain or in other kind of forced-out sort of physical processes, it's happening through taxation. And yet, every year, we say and we beat our chests that we have reduced the tax rate, and what we've only done is just played twiddlywinks. If we're going to cut the tax rate, that means we have to be efficient in the rest of our delivery of services in all of our departments. There's never a discussion about the efficiency of how we operate the city of Dallas. It's always about more, 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 and very little proof that anyone or any department has become more efficient, therefore more effective. So I think we have to reduce the property rate to put some sort of leverage in this escalating cost of these homes because it costs 125 to 50,000 nowadays just to build a house. Literally, three years ago, it didn't cost that much and things were in a more quote-unquote affordable arena. All right. The other thing I want to comment on is let's practice equity when we see it. It is unconscionable to me that the city would pay for one full staff person FTE to operate to support the development of townhouses and larger expensive houses on Singleton and West Dallas and provide a staff person to handle all of the remediation for the environmental issues. But you flip and go to South Dallas and we want to build houses there in a low-income area, and it's full of remediation needs for groundwater and contamination, but yet we leave that up to the community developer who barely has one or 2% income retainer on his property in the first place. That is such a glaring, glaring inequity. And I hate to mention it, I have to, Shingle Mountain is not over. Ms. Marsha Jackson is still living next door to a contaminated site, it's just not three stories high. Now it's a story below the ground. And the same inaction that was demonstrated for the three to four years she was trying to get anyone's attention is still happening. Let's not fool ourselves to think that we do, we do a, an equity audit and we bring in excellent consultants who tell us what to do. We know what to do sometimes without outsiders telling us what we should do. We should do right. And we are not doing that when we have the opportunity to do it. I will stop right there and let others speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that because you're absolutely right. I think when we started this project, one of the things that we heard from the community is that there, there has been plan after plan after plan and that, that they haven't been either followed through on or they were rolled over, there hasn't been real clear communication. And the other thing that we did here too is we heard about what you were talking about is the staff that's dedicated to some of these projects and not other projects. So when we think about equity, it's not just in about the development side, but it's how services are delivered throughout the, throughout the community. Are there other comments or questions on the, from the lines?
Councilman Patonis, you want to bring us home?
Absolutely. I want to say thank you once again for those who participated. I think it's been once again a lively discussion. You know, I have lived long enough to, to understand, it's about quality, not so much as quantity. Those voices that have made themselves heard, especially those who made their way down to City Hall, we, we appreciate you being here in person, being able to eyeball our presenters. Unfortunately, I was unable to be with you in person this evening. However, we look forward to our next two conversations. We will continue to make sure we get the word out. We want everyone to have an opportunity to have their voice heard in this process. I want to thank Chair Schultz for being present. It says a lot that she wanted to be here. She's not even on the Housing and Home Solutions Committee, but yet it's still this work on equity is so important and it's important to her. And the question was asked about continuing the work. We've had conversations in terms of when I transition out, Chair Schultz, as well as our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, who was my vice chair, being here to continue this important work. This is not about a day, it's not about a week, it's not about a year, it's about a lifestyle change for the city of Dallas. And that's what I'm committed to, that's what we're committed to. And so I want to thank you for joining us tonight. Tune in tomorrow, same time, same location. Everyone, have a good night, be safe, hope it is real. Thank you.